I'd like to call this meeting of your Newark City Council to order July 6, 2021. Janine, please call the roll. It's 7:00 AM.
Mr. Lang?
President.
Mr. Marby?
President.
Mr. Rath?
Here.
Mr. Barker?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Bob?
Here.
Mr. Fennell?
Ms. Hall?
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Laboudis?
Here.
We have eight here or presidents this evening. If you please stand for the invocation, Mr. Blake.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. It's a pleasure to introduce Pastor Dan Meek from Newark, NASS, this evening to come and offer prayer for our community and for us as leaders. And Newark NASS has done a great work, great many works, in our community for the back-to-school program, to other programs, and so just a pleasure to have you here tonight and I'd like you to come to the podium and lead us in prayer.
Thank you very much. Today, I had an opportunity to have lunch with some volunteers that serve in the food pantry on Tuesdays and Thursdays. That was just a beautiful moment where the church partners with the municipality and that. You mentioned the back-to-school thing. I'm really excited about the fact that last year and this year, that involves a lot of churches, and the Salvation Army's grown beyond what Newark NASS can do. So we are so thrilled to partner with the churches of the city and with the city as well. And I'm honored to be here today and to pray for you because it's my privilege to pray for those who bear the responsibility that you do. So let's bow our heads together and let's pray this evening. Dear God, we thank you for your goodness, for the gifts of life and community. Thanks for calling me to this wonderful community, Newark, Ohio. I thank you for these elected officials to whom you have lent your authority, and I thank you for every citizen they serve. Thank you for using this group to hold the civic life of Newark together through 18 very difficult months. I pray right now for those who lost loved ones, who lost businesses, who lost opportunities during that time. God, bring healing and use this group to do it. God, I thank you for your promise that you are making all things new. I pray for our first responders, police, fire, EMS, and health workers. Please keep them safe by your hand as they keep us safe by their skill. I pray, oh God, for our educators and for our students. Show them how to make this an even better community of the next generation with even greater opportunity for everyone. I pray for those in business. Give them resources to help people find the godly gift of good work. And I pray for those who cannot work. May we care well for them. I pray that you will give this group gathered here the gifts of courage and honesty and wisdom. Bless their families and their personal lives as they give precious time to serve us all. May any legitimate differences they have produce only a healthy exchange and never unhealthy division. Through their efforts, I pray that you would help all of the people of Newark to flourish for the common good and for your glory. May these leaders act justly. May they love mercy, and may they walk humbly with you, oh God. It's in the name of your Son, Jesus, I pray this. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Meek. If you please join me in a pledge. My pledge is...
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have caucus. That's a time for council to discuss anything pertaining to the agenda tonight. Do we have anything? Mr. Marby?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to excuse Ms. Hall and Mr. Fennell.
Second by Mr. Blake. Halls in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same time. Is there anything else? Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be abstaining from 21-36 tonight.
21-36. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Anything else? Okay. Next, we have our minutes of our June 21, 2021 meeting. Is there a motion to approve those?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Laboudis.
Second.
Second by Mr. Parker. Halls in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same time. That passes. We have no appointments this evening. We have two reports from standing committees, one from finance and one from safety. Without objection, those will be received and filed. We have no reports from city officials this evening, and we're going to have two public hearings tonight on your communications. First public hearing, 21-09. Janine, would you please read the public hearing?
Ordinance number 21-09, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 19 East Street, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of TFR, two-family residence district, to MFR, multi-family residence district zoning code of the City of Newark, Ohio.
We're going to open this public hearing. The planning commission has recommended MFR, multi-family residential residence district. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak for or against this particular public hearing? Again, anyone for or anyone against? One more time, anyone for or against? Okay, we're going to close this public hearing. Janine, please read 21-09 for the second reading.
Ordinance number 21-09, and ordinance changing by Mr. Rath, Mr. Parker, Mr. Marby, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 19 East Street, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of TFR, two-family residence district, to MFR, multi-family residence district zoning code of the City of Newark, Ohio.
You've heard your second reading of 21-09. What is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Rath?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 21-09.
Motion by Mr. Rath?
Second.
Second by Mr. Parker? Is there any discussion on 21-09? Seeing none, Janine, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry. Did I miss something?
No.
Mr. Marby?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Ms. Hall?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Laboudis?
Yes.
21-09 passes 8-0. And our other public hearing this evening, 21-18. Janine, please read the public hearing.
Ordinance number 21-18, and ordinance establishing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as Horns Hill Road located between the addresses of 1700 Horns Hill Road to 3131 Horns Hill Road, parcel tax ID number 058-286682-01.000 and 058-286194-00.000, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, to single-family residence medium-density district zoning code of the City of Newark, Ohio.
And once again, the planning commission has recommended single-family residence RM medium-density district. So I will open this public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak for or against this one? Mr. Lang? Just come up and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Steve Lehman, 915 Hawthorne Lane. By no means having on the screen on the front of the drawing, so... We have 55 acres of ground on Horns Hill Road that we would like to put a housing subdivision in. When we approached, planning commission, when we approached council the first time, we asked for RM zoning with a stipulation that there be no more than 115 lots. The reason, well, we're not interested in a lot of density. This ground would support probably through zoning 150 lots, but we didn't want to do that. If you look at the drawing, you'll see right in the middle that there's about a five-acre movement space, playground, ball field. We think it'll make a nice development. We asked for the RM zoning simply because we will make the lots more clusterable, make them smaller, so build less road that preserves the open space. At planning commission, and this is, this really didn't have anything to do with zoning, but at planning commission, the main opposition from the neighbors, if I could characterize it correctly, was a connection between one of our streets and Meadowland Drive. We have, in consultation with the engineers, revised our initial drawing, and that connection goes away, and that is now planned, assuming the final plat is approved that way, which we're going to ask for, but that where it becomes a cul-de-sac, so there is no connection to the subdivision to the south. One other thing we talked about with the, at the planning commission, I'll just say it here, in lieu of having built a turn lane, we don't think we need a turn lane because we have two entrances and it'd be awkward to build a turn lane there. We are prepared to pay a $1,500 voluntary impact fee to the city upon planning, and the intention is that money would be used for improvements on Horns Hill where the city deems it most appropriate. It adds up to just under $170,000. It's not insignificant enough money. It doesn't solve all the problems, certainly a start. So with that said, it's pretty simple. We would like to develop a single-family subdivision there starting this summer. We believe the market is there. Homes, originally, they were going to be 280,000. I suspect now they're more than that just because the costs have gone up a lot since we started this. I'm happy to answer questions, but it's pretty simple. Would you like to have RM zoning? Thank you.
That was 1,500 per lot is what you're paying?
1,500 per lot upon the acceptance of the preliminary plat to leave, console on, to file plat, to leave console on.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. Anyone else like to speak for or against?
My name is Brian Wallway. I live at 1676 Abbey Drive in the Meadowlands area where the connector road was going to go. I was here at the zoning planning commission meeting last month or whenever that was when Mr. Lehman presented his plans, and I was one of them that expressed concern about the connector road and how it was going to generate a lot of additional noise in a neighborhood that is generally very quiet. I believe it's called Meadowlands for a reason because it's like a meadow. It's very quiet, very calm, very peaceful, and I would like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Lehman for hearing our voices, our voices of concern about that connector road and modifying the plans. I greatly, greatly appreciate that, Mr. Lehman. And I guess one question is, you mentioned that that connector, that plat where the connector road was planned to be would become a cul-de-sac?
Yeah. This was connected there. It's not cul-de-sac, so there's no connection. There's no vehicle access.
Do we know what would happen with that particular lot?
If I owned a lot next to it once it was all done, I would ask to vacate it.
Okay.
That's just me.
Okay, I understand. Okay. Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to speak for or against? One more time, anyone for or against? Again, the planning commission has recommended single-family residence RM medium-density district. So we're going to close this public hearing. Janine, would you like to read 21-18 again for the second time?
Ordinance number 21-18 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Parker, and Mr. Marby, and ordinance establishing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as Horns Hill Road located between the addresses of 1700 Horns Hill Road to 3131 Horns Hill Road, parcel tax ID number 058-286682-01.000 and 058-286194-00.000, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, to single-family residence medium-density district zoning code of the City of Newark, Ohio.
You've heard your second reading of 21-18. What is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Rath?
Let's make a motion to adopt 21-18.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Rath?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lang. Is there any discussion on 21-18? Mr. Marby?
Thank you, Mr. President. Due to the fact that we have not yet annexed this property in, and we probably will in a matter of minutes, I want to make a motion because we really cannot do zoning for a property that is not within our city limits. So I'd like to make a motion to table this until miscellaneous, and then we can vote on it in miscellaneous.
How about changing your motion, too? We'll table this, and then I'll go ahead and we'll do 21-19, a little bit out of order, then we'll come back to this one. That be okay?
That's your pro.
Okay.
Second.
Is there a second for that?
Yes, sir.
Janine, please call the roll. We're going to table this for a moment.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marby?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Ms. Hall?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Laboudis?
Yes.
21-18 has been tabled. Now, I'm going to change the order a little bit, and we're going to go ahead to ordinances on the second reading and read 21-19.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Point of order?
Mr. Rath?
Not to be a step word, but we're going to be voting on a zoning, we're going to be voting on an annexation. We're going to be doing so without an opportunity for citizen comment. I'd like to suggest that we do citizens' comments first.
Okay.
And just in case somebody might have an opportunity to comment on these particular issues.
Even though we just did a public hearing? I'll go ahead and we'll do that.
Not on the annexation.
I got you. I understand. Okay.
Just try and keep this true.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and do comments from citizens. Basically, this is just not a debate with council. This is your opportunity to be heard. There are two places for comments from citizens, one now and one after the legislation. So if you'd like to speak, if you please raise your hand, I'll call you up in order and we'll hear what you have to say. Who would like to speak in this first section of citizens' comments? Sir, want to come on up, give us your name and address for the record? Anyone else would like to speak to this first section? Give me your hand now so I can get things in order. Okay?
My name is Rodney Cobble. I live at 306 Song Street. I'm here because the park down there is my grandpa's park, and they feed the kids down there and stuff. They cut the fence down, which I know the price lumber right now is high, but they could take some old guardrail post or something and drive it in the ground down there and put a cable or something to keep the vehicles from either coming into the park or the children running out of the park. And also, the picnic tables are so deteriorated, I don't see how, I mean, the boards are like used, you know what I mean? And if they would just replace the ones that are bad, it would be a big help because you have all that traffic coming down through there from Babe Ruth, and you want the city to look nice. Plus, her sign leans at about a 45-degree angle, and at the top of it, where it says the City of Newark, it's about rotted at half. I did speak with Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Rhodes did take the graffiti off the sidewalk, underneath the over, the shoulder that they have down there. I deeply appreciate that because it's awful vulgar and no kids are there. Now, today, I was down there and I picked a brake cowl up out of the parking lot, a can of brake fluid. There's always people working on cars in the park. I think maybe we need to put a light right there by the shelter house so it would be lit up more. I find, today, I also picked up two phone things from the Salvation Army and put it in the trash basket. I just asked that maybe we could get some of these things addressed so the kids would have a decent place to eat their meals at and stuff and make it safe. So, like I said, there's a lot of traffic from Babe Ruth, and a car would go through the park because the trees ain't big enough to stop. And the trees are overhanging in the road, so if a kid would run out, it would be, I mean, what's a few dollars compared to a kid's life? I mean, I'm asking for someone to straighten the park up a little bit so it looks decent and make the city look presentable. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I know Mr. Rhodes is here. I'm sure he's taking note of that, so thank you. Okay, we're going to go on to 21-19. Ordinance is on the second reading.
Ordinance number 21-19 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Parker, Mr. Marby, Mr. Laboudis, Mr. ...
One?
Lang?
Pick a name.
And ordinance establishing certain territory generally described as Horns Hill Road located between the addresses of 1700 Horns Hill Road to 3131 Horns Hill Road, parcel tax ID number 058-286682-01.000 and 058-286194-00.000, being 55.5 acres, more or less, located in Newark Township to the City of Newark, Ohio.
You've heard your second reading of 21-19. What is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Rath?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 21-19.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Rath?
Second.
Second by Mr. Marby. Any discussion on 21-19?
Apparently not.
Would you like me to wait and read something else first, or are you okay now?
That's your will.
That was a good suggestion, Mr. Rath.
That's your will.
I give you our time to argue that suggestion. Any discussion? Seeing none, Janine, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marby?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Ms. Hall?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Laboudis?
Yes.
21-19 passes 8-0. And next, on the second reading, we're going to do 21-18. And then we'll get back on the agenda.
Mr. President?
Mr. Marby?
I'll make a motion to bring 21-18 off the table.
Second by Mr. Parker. Motion by Mr. Marby to bring it on the table. Second by Mr. Parker. Motion to table, not to table. So, Janine, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marby?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Ms. Hall?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Laboudis?
Yes.
21-18 passes 8-0. Okay. Now, we're going to go on to ordinances on the first reading. There are no ordinance on the first reading. Resolutions on the second reading, 21-36.
Resolution number 21-36 by Mr. Marby, Mr. Parker, Mr. Rath, and Mr. Laboudis. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard your second reading of 21-36. What is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marby?
I'd make a motion to adopt 21-36.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marby?
Second.
Second by Mr. Laboudis. Is there any discussion on 21-36?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marby?
I'd make a motion to adopt 21-36.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marby?
Second.
Second by Mr. Laboudis. Is there any discussion on 21-36? Seeing none, Janine, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marby?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Abstain.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Ms. Hall?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Laboudis?
Yes.
Seven yes and one abstention, so 21-36 passes. Next, we'll go to resolutions on the first reading, 21-37.
Resolution number 21-37 expedite by Mr. Marby, Mr. Parker, Mr. Laboudis, Mr. Rath. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
21-37.
Mr. President?
Mr. Marby?
I'd make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on resolution 21-37.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule. Mr. Marby, second by Mr. Bob. Mr. Marby?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have payout and some other miscellaneous items that we need to make sure to get expedited. Any kind of payouts, we always expedite those to get the finances to the individuals as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Marby. Janine, please call the roll to waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marby?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Ms. Hall?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Laboudis?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived. Mr. Marby?
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to adopt resolution 21-37.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marby? Second. Second by Mr. Bob. Any discussion on 21-37? Seeing none, Janine, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marby?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Ms. Hall?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Laboudis?
Yes.
21-37 passes 8-0. And finally tonight, we have 21-38.
Resolution number 21-38 by Mr. Marby, Mr. Laboudis, and Mr. Rath. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
And 21-38 will be held until our July 19 meeting. And that concludes our legislation night. Thank you for your attention. Now's our second opportunity for comments from citizens. Again, this is not a debate with council. This is just your opportunity to be heard. Do we have anyone that would like to speak? Again, just raise your hand, and I'll have you come up. Okay, any city officials this evening? The Honorable Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will pass.
Thank you, Director Sassen. Mayor Hall?
I will pass, too, you too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Lang?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Just one quick note, I wanted to congratulate the Newark Police detectives making the arrests for the shooting that happened unfortunate over the weekend. It was quick, swift action, as always, from the Newark Police.
I wanna thank some folks in the, in the city, property maintenance, they're doing a great job this year, and anytime that I have to communicate with them on any kind of issues, they've been very responsive, so I wanna thank Joe Paul and also Director Hickman for the job that they do, as far as making sure that they keep up on things. I know it's a busy, busy department, and they can't get to everything right away, but they do end up getting to it, so I wanna show my gratitude for that. Also, I wanna thank Director Rhodes in helping me with a couple of just small issues here and there in the past probably fifteen days. He's been very responsive also in making sure that I get the information that I need to just communicate with constituents. A lot of times, they're just trying to find out what can be done, what can't be done, and he's been able to assist me with that, and I really appreciate that also. I think it was quite an exciting Fourth of July in the City of Newark, and, and for the City of Newark not having fireworks, wow, there was a lot of fireworks. So, I don't know if they split them on anymore, because there was plenty of them, and they went till late into the evening. So, and my dog does not like them, so that's, that didn't make for a happy wife, happy life, so. With that, I hope everybody enjoyed the Fourth of July holiday, and we all know that with the mark of Fourth of July, that just means that falls on its way, so.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. I didn't have to add that in.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanna call a service committee meeting for the nineteenth. Plan to make, Mr. Rhodes, we're taking care of the, a road flooding issue over in my neighborhood, and it has made a huge difference. I appreciate that. Thanks for getting around to that. Definitely wanna congratulate the Newark Police Department on a job well done this weekend, and with that being said, I, I will let you know that it's still in my mind about our officers not having body cams. I know we're looking into some different issues on that, different, different funding considerations, but nonetheless, that, that should be something, in my mind at least, that should take priority. With that, I will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Rath. Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just quickly this evening, again, the arrest of the two individuals by NPD, they did a great job this weekend. I saw it very quickly happen by people reporting it online, and was pleased this morning when that release was sent out. I also want to make sure we're all aware that there's a stormwater management meeting this coming week. We're gonna, we're gonna be discussing a couple of different issues. Buckeye Avenue being one of those. Had to kinda get postponed a little bit, do some, I think some vacations and things, but we will be having that this Thursday, and I, I know that Councilman Harris, Councilman Blake, and I have all been invited to that, and so we're looking forward to seeing what our stormwater department is looking at to correct some of these issues, so. And with that, I will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I also wanted to just give some kudos to Lindsey Brighton, our stormwater coordinator. In addition to Buckeye Avenue, there are some issues on Maple Grove and even down off Second Street, so I've had a few different constituents with concerns about stormwater, and she's just been very responsive and very cooperative and just a true professional, so I look forward to attending that meeting that Councilman Parker just mentioned, and so seeing how we can better work together with our residents. Mr. Cobal and Mrs. Cobal, I thank you for coming in tonight. I, I, I was a young man when Florence Cobal was the mayor of Little Texas, and her memory does live on in, in, in the South End in Little Texas, and I know that I've communicated and you've communicated with Director Rhodes, and hopefully we could get her new sign down there to continue that memory on, and, you know, I know it's very sentimental to you, but it also expands beyond your family, because I've also talked to Drew Hughes and Carol McAllister down there, Chad Varrasso, so, you know, Little Texas is this tight-knit